So I'm going to call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M on October twenty fifth. And I'm gonna, just so everyone knows, John Hootson is not here. He is out on leave. So I'm gonna ask the town administrator Snyder to do a roll call, please.
All right, Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Janet Stuckett.
Here.
Commissioner Charles Culver. Your time, Henshaw.
Here.
And Commissioner Karen Law.
Here.
Here.
Uh, town administrator Costner.
President.
Chief of Police David VERS.
Here.
And then Director of Public Works Darnell Bond, absent, all present here.
If relevant, that is also an excuse absence, so. Um, and we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand. And one nation. Under God, into this bold liberty and justice for all. I might have switched to that. Um, now we're gonna just review the agenda. I'm actually gonna. Do you want, do you want to read that, Kyle? You want me to read it?
Sure, I can read it. So, uh. Agenda.
Just the numbers.
Sorry.
Sorry. So first, we're gonna have the consent agenda. With the meeting minutes, financial report, public safety, you know, all the reports. Port outs from the committees and the commissioners. Um, and then we'll get into the business. Um, and there are three financial expenditure approvals, one for the copier contract, one for the tough book purchase, and one for the electrical work in the pocket park. Uh, then we'll move on to the regular business. Um, that's gonna be the financial legislation package. The emergency ordinance, which is maybe not, we're gonna discuss that. Twenty twenty-two oh seven to amend twenty twelve oh two establishing historical committee. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, which is dignity and respect. A road engineering firm contract amendment and ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight parking. And then, um, the last item will be emergency resident assistance. Then we'll have administrative updates and public comment, um, followed by approval of the next meeting agenda and adjournment. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to propose? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
How do you want me to call the vote tonight, or?
I can go.
Okay.
Yeah, I may just go out of order sometimes on official names, but, because I'm just going through what Zee has, yeah. Uh, so Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Janet Stuckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Charles Culver.
Hi.
Commissioner Thomas Henshaw.
Hi.
And Commissioner Karen Law.
Hi.
You guys have it, you nins.
I will head on over to reports, starting with Arts Council Committee Report. Um, I don't see anyone from there, so we're gonna turn it over to Commissioner Duckett.
Oh, for the Arts Council. Caught me off guard. I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I thought you were looking to unmute, but you are unmuted, so you're good.
Yes, I am unmuted. But, um, I have no reports for the Arts Council at this time. Um, yeah.
Um, Cert Committee Report. Chief, do you want to take that?
Uh, yes, they had their regularly scheduled meeting, and they participated in a few events in September, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Events Committee Report, Commissioner Law.
Hi, good evening. We've been meeting, uh, well, we started meeting once a week, um, on Thursdays. We have a meeting coming up on this Thursday. Commissioner Duckett and I agreed to, um, condense the, um, the days and just do one day to Saturday, December third, which made sense. Um, so we didn't, um, over, uh, overwork the volunteers, and basically, we're still in the planning process. We should have things, um, solidified at the end of the month. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Green Team Report, Commissioner Henshaw.
Um, not much going on there. Um, we're working on the farmer's market for the weekend on Saturday. Um, right now, we're cleaning up the garden and, um, coming up with the leadership. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, Greenwell Consulting, maybe move them to the bottom, but. I don't think they're here. Do you have anything, Kyle?
Well, I don't know. I know they're working on a couple of things, um, surplus property, getting ready for the upcoming, um, session and whatnot, so.
They did let us know that we were awarded the, um, Community Legacy Grant again this year, so. So we will go to the Historical Committee.
Got it. Okay, sorry, wasn't, I was, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
You can hear me.
Okay, uh, first, I want to thank, uh, the town, Public Safety, Public Works, and all the volunteers for this centennial celebration. And, uh, I want to thank specifically John Ho- Hootson for all the work that he did, getting, uh, all the donations, uh, and making the celebration a success. I'm working currently on trying to send out the thank you letters for each of the businesses that donated, uh, and it's a long list. On October twelfth, the T U M H C sent a letter of support to Mary Palmer, who is requesting grant money for work required on the Thomas J. Turner House located at the corner of Old Mar- Old Marlboro Pike and Elm Street. Um, we also had an archive session on the fifteenth. As the T U M H C board is expiring, uh, this month, uh, the session was held to discuss the availability and desire of current board members to remain on the T U M H C board and, uh, did some outreach for other potential members of the board. Uh, at the request of the clerk for the commission, names of potential T U M H C board members were provided. Um, Team T U M H C also continues to work with Isaac Prentice for the Prince George's County lynching memorial project. Had a conversation with him on October eighteenth. Regarding the Prince George's County Historical Society's DeMar Library, its location, its function, its hours, and gave him some potential points of contact for, from the PG County Historical Society. I notified the board, the T U M H C board of the Emergency Ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven, and provided each member a copy of the ordinance and the, uh, and the ordinance twenty-nine, twenty nineteen oh two, under which T U M H C will function once approved. Uh, upon approval of the Emergency Ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven, the T U M A H C will immediately, immediately lose one board member and a significant number of associate members. Um, under the ordinance twenty nineteen oh two qualifications, a board member shall be a resident of the town. As members of the Board of T U H C were appointed by the President and the Commission to serve at will to the town, according to the ordinance twenty twelve oh two, I questioned the rationale of the town emergency, which would immediately defund the committee.
So, um.
It would be unable, uh, please let me finish.
So this, you have gone off topic from the report to a topic that is a business topic, so I am gonna ask you.
I, I need to read the resignations.
Okay.
And that's what I was getting at, and why we, why there's a resignation.
Okay.
Um, the emergency ordinance and the actions of the Commission to repeal October, uh, ordinance twenty twelve oh two, without discussion of any board members, displace.
So again, um, can you please just read the resignations, and we will discuss this during the business, because we have not approved anything right now?
So, but twenty twelve does not restrict the members to resign in the board.
Um, if you want to announce resignations, please do so. We will talk about business during.
Board, the following T A, to T U M H C board member resignations have been received by the chairperson. George Lenick, effective September twenty twenty-two, September twenty twenty-two. George Joe Erkley, received ten twenty-two twenty twenty-two, effective immediately upon approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven. Rusty Penoyar rece- received twenty twenty, ten twenty-two twenty twenty-two, effective immediately. Brian Calacot, received twenty, ten twenty-two twenty twenty-two, effective immediately. Evelyn Stevens, received ten twenty-three twenty twenty-two, effective immediately. And as, uh, when. Ordinance twenty nineteen oh two, Tam, Tom Kavanaugh will no longer qualify as a board member or associate member under the T U M H C, uh, due to, uh, it, it requiring them to be town residents. Pat Fen, who provided her name and submitted her name, um, uh, will no longer qualify under twenty nineteen oh two. Chairperson Patty Calacott submitted the resignation on ten twenty-two twenty twenty-two, to be effective on ten thirty-one twenty twenty-two, or upon approval of town ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven. Um, upon their resignations from the board, the board members whose names were submitted to the clerk at the request of the commissioners have withdrawn their names as participant, participating members of the T U M A, T U M H C for the next term.
I'm sorry to hear that everyone wanted to resign rather than have a discussion about that. Thank you for letting us know. Um, and we will move on to the Standable Communities Committee Report.
Uh, I just got a text from one of the members. I think they're having audio problems. Uh, no report at this time.
Okay. All right, we will move in reports. Um, I will start off. I have a pretty lengthy report, um, and I don't want anyone to forget that we have an ongoing food drive. Uh, we are partnering with Marlboro Church's Food Bank, Providence Saint John Baptist Church. Uh, and I think Union United Methodist Church is also collecting for this food drive. And there is a blue bin outside Town Hall. You can put food in it at any time. It's being checked regularly, and the food is being brought into the Town Hall and will be delivered to the, um, food bank. Um, I want to let everyone know, because you're curious, why we are still not blended. We had our, all our modifications made, staff tested it. It didn't work quite, so they had to order a few more pieces of equipment. Those pieces of equipment arrived today, um, and so they will be tested, and hopefully, we will be doing a blended test for the work session. Generally, work sessions will be virtual, uh, but we want to make sure we test. Um, I attended the Crane Highway Memorial Centennial. It was an amazing event. Again, John Hootson did an amazing job. Our support crews, the town just really did a very nice job with that, and it's gotten a lot for us. Attended food truck Friday, uh, at the beginning of the month. There will be another one, uh, this Friday. Um, we had a growing green with pride cleanup in coordination with the county. Um, I want to shout out Sandra George, town resident. Her and I were out there cleaning up with a friend who, uh, was able to get special permission to bring a kayak into the pond and clean up there. And we removed six total bags of trash. Um, I was invited to Marlboro Ridge to do some outreach there and was able to talk to them a little about annexation and events. Um, I also was invited by the County Executive, um, experienced Prince George's, the State, uh, Maryland State Horse Board, and M N C P P C to join them in a press conference, uh, regarding the Washington International Horse Show, which was a great honor, um, and really good press for the town. Um, we've been preparing, I've been helping to prepare the art installations, which you guys have seen some of, and we'll see more of. Um, I have sworn in our newest officer, Terrence Anderson, which is very exciting, and we're glad to have him on board. He's gonna be going through training and equipment and all of that. And will soon be with us on, on patrol. Uh, I helped volunteers install a shed at Union United Methodist Church's community garden. Had a breakfast before business, uh, with three of the businesses, four of the businesses came out. And, um, coordinated, I've been coordinating emergency grant application fundings for residents regarding HVACs. Have had, uh, annexation conversation with some developers in our proposed annexation area, and have attended the first day of Washington International Horse Show. I didn't get over today, but. Um, so it's been a busy month, and with that, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Culver.
Um, thanks, Mayor Franklin. Uh, for me, um, unfortunately, well, due to personal vacation and some family emergencies, I wasn't able to attend as many meetings as I would have liked to this past month, but I did also attend the centennial celebration, at least the first portion of it, at the beginning of October. I thought we had a great turnout and, and very appreciative of all the, all the work everyone involved did to, to, to pull that off. Um, and then also attended trunk or treat, uh, with my daughter and niece and nephew this past Friday. And it was my first time actually attending the event, seeing how many people were there and, uh, having a good time. So I also want to, again, thank everyone who was involved in putting that together. Um, just want to thank all the volunteers, everyone who's doing any type of work to, uh, do town events, you know, push the town forward, anything like that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Duckett.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Um, I attended the centennial celebration as well. Very, very great work on everyone's behalf, pulling together to, uh, kick that off. It was just a very exciting event. So, great kudos to all of the staff. And, um, that was there to support. It was really, um, a nice event. Also, um, attended M M L this, um, this month, um, with some training, some classes, just to, uh, get myself up to speed and make sure that I'm aware of what's going on and municipalities and affairs and such. So that was very exciting. That was in Annapolis. And then, um, we, as Commissioner Lot mentioned, we have some Christmas meetings that are taking place for the Christmas town in, um, December, so we're very excited about that as well. And, um, I think that's it for right now. That's all I have.
Forgot about M M L. It feels so long ago.
I know.
Um, Commissioner Handcheck, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to say kudos to John for, uh, great, uh, centennial celebration. It was amazing. Um, I also went to trunk or treat, and I was just blown away by the number of people and how big it really is. It was a draw. I mean, I had no idea that it was gonna be so many people. It was really nice to see all these families coming and enjoying it, and I think we can build off of that. Uh, but that's another conversation. I'll be going to the meet and greet at the Washington Horse Show Saturday night, this coming Saturday. Um, I did attend the swearing in for Terrence Anderson. There was a small little thing at, uh, City Hall. That was nice to meet him and. Um, I also attended M M L. Got a couple more classes to go and on my way to complete and be certified or what, whatnot. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, onto Commissioner Law.
Good evening, everyone. I too attended M M L. I had a great experience, um, great learning experience, and I'm excited about having just a few more classes to finish up. Um, I also want to give kudos to John for the centennial event. It was very nice. I've never been to anything like that before, so it was very nice, and, um, I'm planning on going to the event on Saturday, uh, the meet and greet, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. So we're gonna move on to our business agenda. We're gonna start off with the financial expenditure approvals. Um, and we'll start off with, do you want to just take us through each of them, and we can improve them together? I think Kyle is why John put them on here like this.
Uh, yeah, we can. We just need to make sure we get public comment.
For.
Yep.
We should give them for each item. You're right. We'll, we'll go through them one at a time.
Resolution. Hopefully, they're pretty quick. Um, so I can just run through the first one and also read it into the record, um, since I'm actually with John tonight. So this is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, a resolution of its town board of commissioners for the town of Marlboro to enter into a lease agreement with on board, um, copier for the lease of two printers. Um, this was discussed at the work session. Last month, I broke out, um, the amounts for each of those lease agreements. Uh, one for the general government copier, which replaces the one purchased back in twenty fifteen, I do believe. And then police getting a smaller new one, since their, um, I P system is gonna be separated from the town. They won't be able to print to the town printer anymore. Um, and so those are the amounts. I can answer any questions.
Or do we have any questions? Okay, shall we take public comment on this matter?
See, any raised hands, uh, any public comments in their hands? But I see none at this time.
Okay, and just folks for general public comment, uh, while we're talking about the item, if you have, or you're gonna have a public comment, just raise your hand, so that we'll be able to move efficiently through the items. Um, hearing no public comment or commissioner comment, I am asking if there's a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty, approving copy of contract.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
How would you call the vote for us, please?
Absolutely. Um, Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Charles Culver.
Hi.
Commissioner Janet Stuckett.
Hi.
Miss, Mayor Thomas Henshaw.
Hi.
And Commissioner Karen Law.
Hi.
You guys have it, unanimous vote, or the resolution passes.
Okay, you can go ahead and move on to the next one.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, um, resolution of the town, town board of commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro to authorize the purchase of a tough book computer for the police department. So discussed at the work session, um, and I broke it out from the resolution not to exceed thirty-five.
Let me see how many minutes.
Do you have anything else to add, but?
Okay, does anyone have any comments? Okay. I don't see any public comment either. Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one approving tough book purchase for police department?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
How would you call the vote?
Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Charles Culver.
Hi.
Commissioner Janet Stuckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Thomas Henshaw.
Hi.
Commissioner Karen Law.
Hi.
You guys have it, regardless of.
Okay, and we'll move on to twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
A resolution of the town board of commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro to authorize the execution of the proposal to install electrical connections to the pocket park, not to exceed eight thousand dollars. Um, this is a proposal, um, being funded by grants. Um, funds to have a Pepto hook up at the current pocket park location. Hopefully, we can have it in, um, by Christmas time. Um, this was also discussed at the work session.
Is there any commissioner comments, questions, et cetera?
We.
Okay, um, we do have public comments.
Very good.
Joe Erkley, Old Marlboro Pike, um, I was just wondering if there are any plans to put, uh, electric vehicle charging near the park, and if this was related to that.
Correct, yeah, the installation of electrical gives us a lot of options there, um, in the street, um, electric vehicle charging stations. That it?
I think so. I don't know how to turn this on. Wow, uh, all right, so. We, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two approving electrical work in pocket park?
Yes, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kyle, would you call the vote?
So, Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Charles Culver.
Hi.
Stuckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Thomas Henshaw.
Hi.
Commissioner Karen Law.
Hi.
You guys have it, motion passes, unanimous.
Right, we will get into our main business. Um, and we're gonna start off with the financial legislation package, which is intended to stop all these little votes for items that have just inflated beyond the amount that are in the charter. Take your time.
So this is a legislative package, um, for the financial side of the House. Um, it's been discussed for a couple of months now. Um, it's not being introduced or anything like that. It's just up for discussion and see if there's any, um, additional commissioner or public comments, um, before we make some changes to it that the board will hopefully see at the, uh, November work session. Um, we're working through one more, um, kind of policy. It's gonna be the policy on cash flow coming in, where it goes. I'm working with the accounting firm on that, um, just to, to shore that up. That'll be included with some small changes. Um, in the, uh, probably the resolution and the ordinance, the charter amendment resolutions, I'm gonna stand firm. I don't see any changes coming for that. Um, but like I said, the board will see all those kind of final changes at the November work session. Um, there's going to be a public hearing for the charter amendment resolution on the day of the town meeting in November. Um, so stay tuned for that, and then, um, it'll be eligible for passage that day as well. At the November tenth.
So, I know we've been talking about this non, you know, every, every meeting, but I want to make sure everyone has a chance to say, oh, wait a second. So does anyone have any changes or comments about the financial package? Commissioner Culver, you mentioned one to me, so that's why.
Yeah, I did mention one previously. The one that I, uh, had mentioned previously was more so related to, um, the piece about the policy on town credit cards. I was thinking that, um, in order to kind of, uh, uh, smooth the responsibilities of the town administrator, uh, and that's on page thirty-four of the package, just adding in a lot, indicating a designate may be, um, may be allowed as well. So I was just thinking, um, you know, where a town administrator is mentioned, uh, that could read as town administrator, or they're designated for the purposes of that piece of the legislation.
That's under position responsibilities, Commissioner, right there on page thirty-four, or?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You might have to tweak it a little bit, because we don't want to designate someone else to be the head of general government.
Right.
We can tweak that and make that.
More, more so than, uh, more so than mechanical pieces is what I'm taking in terms of a designate.
Okay. All right, just taking a minute with that. Aren't no other comments, and I do not see any public comment. Kyle, this says board vote, but my understanding is that we just put the advertisements into the newspaper, so we have to wait and have a public hearing at the end of the month.
There's, there's no board tonight. Any mention of the board vote is probably a carryover, um.
Okay, so, because we introduced it last time, correct?
Yes.
So all it needs is that public hearing, and then we can, okay.
Yeah, and just because of the, uh, importance of this package, yeah, it, it warranted a three-month. Importance of this package, yeah, it, it warranted a three-month process versus just a, a simple two. Would actually do it along with the charter, because it'll sit for X amount of days.
All right, so we will move on to item three, which is here as emergency ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seven and ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Establishing a historical community for the town of Upper Marlboro, um. I got phone calls from one commissioners yesterday and we, uh, are looking at this now. It's not automatically an emergency ordinance. Um, so I'm gonna ask Kyle to explain everything and why I made the decision I did and why with feedback, um.
I think someone need to shut their microphone off.
In there, you guys here?
Here.
Um, that better, thank you.
Okay. And go ahead and start it. Um, so, um, per ordinance twenty twelve oh two, um, puts before the establishment of the town of Marlboro Historical Committee. Um, but that there is the appointment of a chair and members had to be done, um, by November. Um, obviously we have that timeline. It's November even year, so it's twenty twenty-two. Um, there for appointment. I know. John, um, reached out to, I'm trying to cover for him on this kind of, so John, uh, reached out to the committee, according with a couple of members, get a list of members. It was presented to the board. Um, there's some discussion of how to put that under the existing committee ordinance twenty nineteen oh two. Um, and it's kind of been a fluid discussion since the shifting between emergency, um, version of the ordinance, discussing with the town attorney, best case, and then, of course, the mayor mentioned, uh, come. Discussing with, like, Commissioner Culver, um, so to kind of meet the request of the board, there's kind of two options, um, before the board on how, um, I want to go ahead and, and move forward. With making this happen. Did you want me to go any further in depth, Mayor?
No, we have both options. I, I can kind of take over from here to just kind of explain a little background and, and why things went the way they did. Um, so. Um, back in February and then again, I think in May, we requested that the historical committee and the board members will remember this, that they changed their bylaws to reduce their, um. Committee to three people rather than seven because of the difficulties, um, Commissioner Duckett and I are aware of, uh, that they struggled with to get seven people on their board. At that time, the committee said they would, uh, look at it. But what I did not realize at that time was that the historical committee is authorized by its own ordinance. Um, and all the other committees are underneath a different ordinance. Um, so that means the historic committee was being treated differently than all the other committees. Um, and so, uh, when I was told that we had to nominate this board and we had to do it before November first, so we asked them to reduce to three. And that didn't happen, so let's get ourselves some more time to have this discussion, um, and at the same time, just put everyone on the same level playing field. Uh, and I. The situation was such that it was like, okay, Kevin, what do we need to do? Our lawyer, we asked lawyer what he needed, what we needed to do. Um, and so he drafted an ordinance for us. Um, and then we were like thinking, okay, it has to be an emergency ordinance because if we don't nominate people and then it goes. On it will, will not have that board when we should have that board. And our lawyer was on vacation and I emailed all the commissioners and we all have our own. Kind of thing going on, but I didn't receive feedback from the lawyer or from other commissioners. And so I said, okay, well, then that is what we should do. And so that's how the packet got published. Um, and on Monday, um, I had a discussion with one of the commissioners who had some time to catch up over the weekend. Um, and we talked about an emergency versus a non-emergency ordinance and how that could work and how it could make it. Be just a regular ordinance and not an emergency ordinance while still giving us more time to have a discussion with the historic committee. Now, the historic committee has decided that they do not want to have a discussion with the board of commissioners and I think. I have to just say, I am disappointed. I am concerned because I think. What this shows is we asked them to change their bylaws. They, they knew they were authorized by ordinance and that we would have to. Approve people before November first. They did not make the changes that this board requested of them. And then they decided they were gonna have their seven people, um, and kind of push us into that. To nominate them tonight. So I don't know if that was, that's maybe me assuming, so sorry if that's not, wasn't the intent. But what this, everyone resigning now because we are trying to buy more time and make the. Make all the committees equal and equitable and even is. Kind of, it kind of shows that it seems like the historic committee thinks that its position is almost higher than the board. Um, that's my personal opinion on how things have played out. I will give the other commissioners the floor to discuss this further.
Um, so I'll, I'll say, uh, Mayor Franklin, you and I spoke on this yesterday. My, my concern was mainly, uh, like I mentioned, with the emergency nature of the ordinance in my. If, if my general view and emergency ordinance, uh, is more so resolved for, or, you know, reserved for things related to. Expenditures, weather-related issues, helping specific residents, thing, things of that nature, and I didn't see this, uh, as a particular. Tripping that threshold of emergency in addition to the fact that based on my reading of the, the twenty twelve ordinance establishing the historic committee. Uh, it wasn't that. Each term, the board had to be, uh, in place by November first of the even year because it says specifically November first twenty twelve establishing the first board. Uh, there isn't necessarily, uh, uh, a mechanism or a clause, at least again, this is, this is according to my reading. I haven't had a conversation with the, with the lawyer on this, but this is my re. On how, you know, each board by when they have to be nominated, approved and in place. Uh, so that, that, that's why for me, it wasn't necessarily, it didn't trip the threshold of having an emergency ordinance, and I thought that we would. We should have it as a normal ordinance where we can have the requisite. Uh, waiting period to solicit that discussion, have that discussion and then move forward from there. Uh, so that was my thought process of having that discussion.
Yes, and I, I confirmed that the lawyer in your reading is correct. Um, so I think he drafted a regular ordinance and then we thought it needed to be an emergency ordinance. And everyone's heard me say this, is that we make better decisions than I do. Um, so that's why I always want you guys to give me feedback. So I think Commissioner Culver and I having a conversation resulted in a. Better decision-making process than I was kind of doing on my own. So I do always want the feedback and I appreciate it. Um, so yes, that Kevin agrees with you that we can just do a regular ordinance without. Um, nominating a new board and the old board will just carry over.
Can I ask a question? This is Commissioner Law, just for clarity purposes. So, um, in this new ordinance. That means that whoever is a part of the historical commi- historical committee would have to, um, going forward, would have to be an actual town resident?
So, yes, this ordinance says that you have to be a town resident, but it says unless prescribed otherwise by law, including any approved bylaws of the body. So all the other committees have non-residents because their bylaws allow that. Um, and the historic committee's current bylaws allow that. Um, and I will say, when I realized all this and I.
So why do, why, why are we changing that if the other ones? I mean, why are we, why are we messing with it if, if the other ones actually can, can serve and they're not a part of our town? What's the difference?
So there isn't actually a difference. It's, so ordinance twenty nineteen oh two actually needs to be revised and it's kind of part of what we're talking about with our. The code of conduct stuff and. As this kind of came all to me on last Monday, so I've had kind of like a week to deal with it. Um, I, you know, have learned about this. These particular situations. So the twenty nineteen oh two is for all committees and it does say that they need to be a resident of the town. And I think we all agree that that should be changed in this. In twenty nineteen oh two, but I didn't want to, already we're having something we didn't have a chance to talk about in our work session, which were, none of us are comfortable with.
I'm, I'm totally not comfortable with that and I, I would, that we table this. Um, this so we can get a better understanding because I'm totally don't understand what.
Right, so the thing is tabling it is the thing that doesn't buy us time, unfortunately, or I wouldn't have.
I'm not trying to buy time. I'm, I'm not trying to buy nobody no time. What I'm trying to do is just get a better understanding. And as of right now, I don't have a clear understanding and that is the why, um, asking that we move to table this.
Unfortunately, we're gonna have to get the better understanding tonight because of the time sensitive nature of this. Um, so and, and again, like, I don't like it, but it came to me on Monday. I did email y'all on Tuesday. I texted you to let me know I had emailed you all. Um, so I was trying to get everyone to understand what was going on. Um.
And right, so do we have an opportunity to, I'm saying table it because I feel like we need to be able to talk to the attorney and ask questions if we have, if we are unclear or uncertain about certain things. And to make sure that, um, all the audience, all of them are basically, they won't be identical, but very similar. So one is not this way and then the others are a certain way. They need to be, they all need to line up and we need to have a standard protocol.
Yes, that's what this actually is doing. Um, because right now there's an ordinance for the historic committee and an ordinance for every other committee. What is this, this ordinance we're considering right now is either emergency or non-emergency, is removing the. Historic committee ordinance. And then that automatically, well, it also, it says it puts the historic committee in under twenty nineteen oh two. So it, what it's doing is taking something that's not even, right, and making it even. And then when I went and looked at twenty nineteen oh two, I said, okay, we also need to make revisions to this, but already it's enough. To have one thing we haven't talked about at work session. Um, the situation is if we do not. I don't know, Commissioner Culver, maybe you have a reading of this, but like if we don't do anything tonight, then, and maybe Kyle, you can kind of. Back me up. We don't do anything tonight, then, and it doesn't really matter because the board has resigned because they didn't want to have a conversation with us, but.
Right, but we need to, even though they resigned because they didn't want to have a conversation, or whatever they chose to do, we still need an historical committee. So we need to, we do know, we don't need to vote on this tonight. We should table it. We should take this back to our attorney and have. A work session or whatever and discuss this, whether they resigned or not, we still have to put something in place. And that's something we should all agree on, what goes, you know, for the next procedure. Policies and procedures. We need to all agree on it.
So I, so I would think of the two options that are on the table, making, having. An emergency ordinance that's voted on tonight or having it be a regular ordinance that's introduced tonight, you know, we have the opportunity to discuss at the work session and then. Vote at the, at the next meeting. That was kind of the reasoning behind going that route because it allows that opportunity for us to discuss as a board. It allows the public an opportunity to have a conversation on it. Um, and I, I, I'm advocating and I. I will say I am advocating for treating this as a normal ordinance so that we can go through those wickets and not. We're not, so I wouldn't say that we're tabling it. We are going through the process of treating it as an ordinance with it being introduced tonight and leaving the room for us to discuss and the public to comment.
That's fun, that's fun. That's fine. It doesn't seem to be, it, to me, it doesn't deem an emergency. You know what I mean? So.
Right, and that's kind of what I was.
We can discuss it, as long as we can discuss it.
This was kind of what I was asking for you guys over the email and the text. Um, so. You know, I had to make my decision, mine instead of our decision. So. I was convinced by what Commissioner Culver was talking to me about yesterday. If everyone else is convinced, I think we pass it as, um. Option two, right, Kyle? Yes, I think so.
Oh.
Commissioner Hans and Commissioner Buckets, do you have comments?
No, I have a comment right now is that, uh, uh, could someone turn off the, um, the sound? There's a wicked sound going on. With paper or something that makes.
I agree, thank you. Somebody need to stop that.
I cannot hear at all. It's, it's.
Does it go away when I mute? No, it didn't go away?
I think it did.
It actually only happens when you're talking. So when you're talking there, it, it's, it's a scratching sound. It, it's only when you're talking that it's doing it. So I don't know if you need to move.
Yeah.
Headphones or anything?
Oh, yeah, but guys, when, uh, department heads, when I move out of this office into the other one, it fixes itself, right?
Yeah, I can't hear it though, uh, the paper rustling, but I don't know if I have different speakers or something, maybe.
I'm just gonna shift real quick while Commissioner Duckett and Commissioner Hanches share their thoughts.
So I'm, I'm clear. I'm, I'm fine with the option two. I think that we should treat it as a regular, um, uh, keep it standard. We need to be consistent with it across the board and not make changes just for the sake of. Of one, but it sounds like we're trying to make, of course, this become, um, consistent with the other, um. Committees that we have and I'm totally for that. You know, if we need to have discussions about it a little bit more, then that's fine, but. Where we need to bring it so that it's not its own entity in a sense, but it is following the same protocols that we use for the other committees.
She just took the words out of my mouth. Uh, I'm in complete agreement. Um, I just don't think it's an, an emergency situation and I agree. Thank you.
Sounds like we're all in agreement on bringing everyone under the same umbrella and just, um, doing it as a normal ordinance. So, and then. I, we won't, we just won't have a board because they've resigned, but we'll appoint, um, new members in December.
Well, some of the members, if I remember, uh, Patty's reading of the resignation, clearly some of them. Were resigning upon passage of the new ordinance. So if we're not passing it tonight, they would at least stay through. January first, I think is what, or.
Patty, the only one for October thirty-first. Everyone else already resigned, I believe.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll let that figure itself out. Um. But, um, and, and we are going, I think we as a committee should have, a commission should have a closed session to discuss this a little bit. Um, on a personnel kind of level. So I'd like to add that to the end of the work session. Um, if that's okay. Um, but we do have public comment, um, and comment is three minutes each, so we will take.
So the order I have so far, Mayor's, uh, Joe Rockley and Brian Calacop and Evelyn Stevenson, uh, Calacop and, uh, Tom Galloway, so.
You can do it in whatever order is easiest for you. I got the timer.
Uh, Joe or Clay Old Ballborough Pike, um, Commissioner Culver was correct. I. Resigned contingent upon the passing of this ordinance. In part because it changes what we have to do to step down. It used to be that it, we were basically at will sort of thing. And night, what is it, twenty nineteen dash whatever makes it that then the. Uh, authorizing body has to then approve the person being able to step down. Um. I also was not aware of the request to make it to three. I know I did miss at least one quarterly meeting, so. You know, possibly that was discussed earlier. Um, but what bothered me was that, um. It was one of our members saw the packet and saw that there was an emergency ordinance that affected our. Our committee without any of us having been told about it. Our committee without any of us having been told about it, you were doing something before just, you know, throwing an emergency.
Is he still talking? I can't hear.
No, I stopped.
Okay. Thank you, um, we can go to the next person.
Hi, this is Brian, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I have nothing stating that we're requested to have a three-person board. I'm requesting as a citizen of the Board of Commissioners that I used to be on, alright, I'm requesting as a citizen that the Board of Commissioners. Including the mayor provide the historical record of such request. Verbal or email request is not sufficient to change an ordinance which establishes the seventh people committee. Mayor should be aware of an ordinance requirement in February or May whenever that request was made, if it was made. Also, when the emergency ordinance was placed on the agenda for tonight. It was placed there Friday at five forty-three PM according to the timestamp, no one talked to us. As a town member, let alone a person who's in a committee, supporting for ten years. Of hard work and effort to try to do better things for the community. I really find that to be a lack of transparency, if you know that this impacts us. There should have been some level of outreach, not like I reached out in February, I reached out in May. But seriously, before you click that button, say, hey, let's send an email to these guys, warning them, there was none of that. That sort of leads me to believe that they really was trying to be done at tonight's meeting only and surprise. Because otherwise I would have heard about it, so I really resigned because the Board of Commissioners did not want to have a conversation with me. So it's really strange to hear the mayor stating this tonight, that's all I have to say.
And the historical record is in the um, meeting videos and minutes, which you guys can take a look at. We'll move on to the next comment.
Uh, Emma, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
I uh, concur with Joe and Brian about now. I could be wrong that this was all brought to the historical committee. Prior to this meeting today, but I have no recollection, recollection of it. I also feel that as Brian so succinctly said. That it should have been a conversation with the historical committee about. The fact that you want, you wanted the historical committee to fall under this new order. Ordinance whereby all the committees should fall under the same ordinance. Also, we have to remember that Open Meetings Act means a lot. And if you just bring it down to three members. And let's say you keep the uh, president and the chair. And the archivists who are married, then they're in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Just by the fact that, you know, they are married and they're going to talk about things in relation to the historical committee. So the reason why I resign uh, was that. I don't feel that the commissioners are thinking about the total picture. Nor am I thinking that the commissioners are looking at these ordinances and how they apply to each. Committee. Why do we necessarily need to have everything under one ordinance? Because each committee could be in a different situation, especially the historical committee. Uh, I don't want to go over my three minutes, but I just want to point out to everyone, please consider. The committees and what they do, what they stand for before you make anything, any decision. On whether it's going to be a board discussion or a board vote. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next comment.
This is Patty, um, as, as the current chairperson. Um, if allowed, I'll work on the transition for the new board. Uh, until resolution or until ordinance twenty-two oh seven is approved. I did not, in all of the quarterly meetings that we have had, ever remember anyone asking us. To take our members down from seven to any number different than that. We have successfully continued this board with seven members with no issues. So I, I don't understand even the reason behind it, um, but I certainly would not have made the assumption. That this board had authority over the commission, had the commission asked us to do that. A- a- as the current um, board members do serve at will. And without any. Communication with the board, all I had to go by was the ordinance with which we were going to have to function. And two thousand nineteen specifically stated that it had to be members of the town. Which would have immediately not allowed us to make a quorum. Based on Jo- uh, George Lennox resignation and then as resignations came in. And the fact that it was an emergency, I ended up just sending the information out to the team. So that they could make their own decisions and most of them were like, why is this happening like this? With no notification or discussion with our board. It has been a pleasure serving the town under the T U M H C board for the past ten years. I've enjoyed working with the dedicated board members, I appreciate the work and the support they provided. To support the mission of the T U M H C in the town, I love this town and its rich history. And have enjoyed volunteering my knowledge, time, money and energy towards the mission of the T U M H C. As I said, I will stay on to help transition the new board if you would like me to.
Alright, thank you, and I just do need to point out that there is a recorded discussion between the chairperson, who just gave comment. And uh, the board saying, stating that we wanted it to be three members, so I can find which meeting that's at for you guys. But not this week because it's insanely busy. We have one more comment.
That's me, ready?
Tom Kavanaugh, yeah, I think, right Kyle?
I was pleased to see so many of you. Appear and talk about how great the uh, Grand Highway Centennial Celebration was. But uh, I was disappointed that you made no reference to the efforts. That the Town of Upper Marlboro Historical Committee have been putting in on that very thing. Since January. With very little help from the other committees in the uh, in the town. And so I'm, I'm inclined to think that. You really don't have much of a concept of what the historical committee does or has been doing. Uh, and I'm disappointed that, that that would have escaped you. I am, by the way, to my way of, to my understanding, I'm the only um. Board member that hasn't uh, resigned. But I don't live in the town, so I'd be disqualified once you, once this ordinance goes into effect. But yeah, I'll hang around, uh, I'd be pleased to continue to support the Town of Upper Marlboro Historical Committee. But you. I'm disappointed in all of you. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, that is our public comment. We will move on to our next item unless commissioners have anything else to say. So our next item is, oh wait, we need to vote, sorry. So, let me make sure I get the motion right, Kyle, can you correct me if I get it wrong?
Sure.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve? Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, a regular ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty. Twelve dash oh two, establishing a historical committee for the Town of Upper Marlboro.
It's uh, just an introduction, so I just need to read it in the record.
Oh, so, okay, so we don't need to do anything.
Correct, yeah, uh, the only thing would be to extend the term of the current board members was the only vote or motion that would be made, but.
I think we need to leave that motion because I, it's. There's not a seven-member board, it's, I think the, the commission. And, and just to clarify for the record, the, the bylaws of the historic committee allow non-residents to be on the committee. Which, which supersedes, sorry, the requirement in twenty twenty nineteen oh two. So no one on the historic committee would be automatically removed based on their residency. So just want to point that out, but I think we really are a kind of a, this, this place where. You know, there, there was a request made to the historic committee, the chairperson of the historic committee acknowledged the request. It did not get translated to the rest of the historic committee and now we are in this place where they feel we're doing things without discussing it with them. Even though we did discuss it with them and it's, it, it just needs more time, so I think we need to vote on the regular ordinance. Have a discussion, the work session, have a closed session after the work session and go from there. So I don't think we need a motion.
No, I just, I can read the uh, the ordinance on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two oh seven and ordinance for men, ordinance twenty twelve dash oh two, establishing a historical committee for the Town of Upper Marlboro. So it could get passed with the uh, November town meeting. The discussion at the work session.
Okay. Did you just do that? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Yeah, it's all, it's all, it just needs to run into the record and it, it's introduced, yeah.
And you had already read it in, to the record at the beginning of this.
Uh, I did not read it at the beginning of this, I read the other resolutions and so.
Did you, okay, so can you do that?
Oh, we're good, I just read it.
Okay, sorry. It has been a long two days. Alright, so then we will move on to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, dignity and respect.
And I'll read this into the record and then the book steps on. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, a resolution for the purpose of adopting. A town personnel respect and dignity protocol and amending the employee handbook of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Okay, um. I'm just gonna say, because at the work session when we discussed this, I felt it was super long. And I think you guys all kind of agreed with me and I said I was going to speak to the town attorney and see if it could be made. Shorter, and what he said was if we make it shorter, it is less impactful in his legal opinion. So I took that under advisement and didn't make any changes to it, however, I am opening it up for discussion.
Um, I, I personally don't have any amendments to it, I understand, you know, wanting to be more concise, but I think. Given kind of the, the breadth of possibilities that, that exist in terms of interactions with, 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 with staff members and. And others, I think it's important to, to have, you know, kind of a comprehensive. Resolution at least, and this is just directing, you know. Kind of how we go, how we amend the, the handbook from here, so I'm, personally, I'm fine with the way that it is, uh, as written.
Yeah, I feel like it's getting a little crazy, um, but hopefully um, Unicode will help us organize things a little better. Alright. I don't see any public comment to other commissioners, did we lose Commissioner Duckett?
Yes, we did.
Oh, she's in the attendees, we got her, okay. So I'm gonna give her a second to get her audio up and see if she has any comments.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you so much, I. I, I've had, I. Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. But we can hear you, and I think it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm all pulling it together, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Whoa, I'm just coming in back in.
Okay. Do you have any comments on the respect and dignity? I didn't realize you were gone, so I wanted to hold that in case you had any comments on that.
No, we've already need to discuss that. Thank you.
There is, there are no hands up in the public, um, so I'm gonna just ask if there is a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. It's called a resolution for the purpose of adopting a town personnel respect and dignity policy.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kyle, can you call the vote?
Eric Franklin?
Hi.
Commissioner Charles Colbert?
Hi.
Commissioner Janice Duckett?
Hi.
Commissioner Tom Sanchet?
Hi.
Commissioner Karen Law?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alright, so we will move on to road engineering firm contract amendment. Um, and you guys know about this because I've mentioned it a couple of times, um, and. You know, was able to, our director of public works was able to talk them down a little bit. But ultimately, our interpretation of their response to our RFP was inaccurate. And so we are going to need to amend the contract, um, so Kyle, can you? Introduce it for us and tell us kind of an overview of it.
Absolutely, uh, since it's Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, a resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro. To amend the town's contract with Mead and Hunt Incorporated. So that's, as the mayor stated, the town released an RFP awarded the road engineering study to Mead and Hunt. After discussion, going through some timelines, it was realized, um, even their uh. Contract and submission was rather vague when it came to a particular part of the RFP, which was analyzing the streets of Marlboro Town. For possibility of them being turned over to the town, so they omitted them from their initial contracts. There was discussion back and forth and they brought the, the price down from what, um, they said it would have to be to amend. Um, they never gave us an answer why it uh, it was admitted in the first place, um, and, and their submission, it was kind of. The wording was vague enough that, that everyone thought that's what they meant by that. So there's a, a small increase not to exceed fifteen thousand, um, that's some built in some wiggle room. That is different than what's currently written in the resolution, so when the board uh, makes the motion, if you could please, uh, just do it with amended. Not to exceed fifteen thousand, um, and once this is approved, um, we should be able to get everything rolling and a director bond was working with them. To get timelines done and we should be seeing some of the surveys uh, move through fairly quickly on all the roads.
Questions, comments, discussions?
So, just, just for the record, I think it's interesting that the vagueness of their proposal has now led to them. Putting it upper on their proposal, on their contract, I think the value of it in relation to the value of the total contract. It's a little bit, it's a little bit in the noise and we've been kind of hand wringing on this for a couple of months now, so we kind of need to move forward on it. But I think it would be worth if we don't have some type of contractor uh, uh, rating or performance system. Have that for the town so that we know we'll either, you know, type of contracts that we're dealing with, that we're asking the right questions. And getting the right answers, so we're not running into the situation again, uh, but just a, just a contracting point there.
The question, sorry.
I was just gonna say you brought that up a couple of times.
Yeah, I did, that we need to have a construction manager overseeing this, just to ensure. That we're getting everything we're supposed to get and that, and, and they don't have to, they can be.
that we're getting everything we're supposed to get and that in in they don't have to, they can be an independent contractor so that, you know, there's no benefit for, you know, for them. So other than just to come and do their job and to make sure that they're paid timely, that they're doing what they're supposed to do, that they do, they're going over their checklist and their punch list and making sure everything they're dotting their Ts and crossing their Is so that we who don't have the expertise, don't have to worry about this stuff. I mean, because at the end, I think what we don't know is that because we don't know, they can be charging us a whole lot more money. Because of what we don't know.
Can I make a request? You know what I'm gonna ask. Can you work with Director Bond and Administrator Snyder to figure that out? Um, because you have the most expertise in that field, so. Um, I think unless other commissioners object, I think you're the best qualified to help them figure that out.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Um, there are public comments.
Uh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, same old question about Old Mill Road. Uh, the last meeting, um, President, the mayor, Sarah said that they were going to have, she was gonna have Darnell do a temporary fix to the tip of Old Mill Road, uh, because it's, you know, really getting bad. And I see that you're getting close to completion of the uh contract on negotiations, but it still seems like it's, you know,
Yes.
in the future. So how is that coming along with my temporary fix for Old Mill Road?
So, um, for the last time I talked with Director Bond about it is that I, he doesn't think that our team can do the fix. So he has to contact one of our road, one of the companies we normally work with um, to get them in to do that. Is that your understanding as well, Kyle? Sorry.
There we go. Sorry. Uh, that's correct. I think he did reach out to, he's trying to find a contractor right now. I think he, my understanding is he reached out to the usual ones. And everyone's just so busy trying to finish up these last minute paving jobs. Um, but he's trying to to get one. He hasn't confirmed any contractor yet. He's still trying to get some.
It's possible that once we execute this contract, that Mead and Hunt may also be willing to do it and give us a price. Um, so it is definitely something I ask him about weekly.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, okay, that that's a great update. That makes me feel better.
We haven't forgotten about you guys.
Thank you.
Who do we have next, Kyle?
Uh, Joe Clay, Old Marlboro Pike. Um, the last time that we had a paving effort, I believe it was a town resident who cut end of, who was a civil engineer who looked over the documents. But I don't believe Mr. Cooper is still in town and I don't know if we have any other qualified civil engineers. I think Kathy Anderson may be one, but I don't know if she does paving type checks. So, uh, just, just as a
Okay, thank you. Um, and we have one more hand raised. Patty Calica.
Hi, um, just a a note that, uh, if or when the town requested that the bylaws for the TMHC be changed.
I'm sorry, I have to stop you to go to the the regular public comment because this is not on our current topic. Okay. Um, is there any further board discussion? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty four to amend the meat and hunt contract with a a limit not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Charles Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Tom Sancho. And Commissioner Karen Law.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinance twenty twenty two dash oh eight parking, which is an introduction of the parking ordinance we discussed last time. I believe we have people who want to comment on this here and I have a a resident who asked me to read a comment into the record, not a resident, but a business owner who asked me to read a comment into the record, but um, does the board have any more discussion of this? And Kyle, I guess you have to read it in all that. I'm just get, I'm starting to get, starting to get late and you guys, you guys know I've gotten very little sleep in the last three days, so. Go ahead, Kyle.
I'll give a quick overview and then we'll turn over the board and then and then the public. Um, so it's gonna be ordinance twenty two dash oh eight, an ordinance of the town of Marlboro to be entitled vehicle and traffic thereby consolidating revising updating and codifying eighteen separate ordinances in the town of Marlboro and acting beginning through nineteen seventy six, five fourteen. Um, but prior new sections regarding the ordinance and purpose and authority, the application of the ordinance. Um, defining certain terms, providing for enforcement of the ordinance, enumerating certain parking restrictions, providing for regulation pertaining to parking meters enumerating certain moving violations, describing certain snow emergency parking restrictions, providing for vehicle impound and telling them with certain conditions, authorizing certain fees, fines and penalties permitting certain fees, fines and penalty charges by resolution, providing a saving provision and generally relating to vehicle and traffic. Um, so this is actually gonna be in order to amend of twenty, I think seventeen to twenty seventeen ordinance last time, we kind of touched the traffic and parking. And it's another legislative package, so it's gonna have the overall ordinance on with some minor updates and changes to it. Um, but I think the big important changes, um, that are kind of most impactful for the two resolutions that go along with it. Um, the resolutions are X's right now, they're not, they don't have numbers. We'll be able to sign those by the work session. Um, but one's gonna be to amend the pa- town parking fine amounts. The county just recently upped their um fine amounts. They just approved them, I think, last week. So we'll be pretty much mimicking those. And then the next resolution be the big discussion to amend parking meter rates and times of the board's already discussed.
We have more discussion on this board. I am going to um, go ahead and read. So one of our business owners, Marlboro Grill, um, has a small child and it's their small child's bedtime. So they sent me a comment and asked if I would please read it into the record. So I'm going to do that before we turn over to the rest of the public. So I'm currently trying to find someone who can put my baby to bed to come. The parking issue is a top priority for the grill. I've gotten reviews saying how everything was great, except there's no parking. It's not a good place to go, especially with six minutes for a quarter. So people are deferred to sit down and eat, which is my employees' way of getting tips to feed their families. And with hardly any parking available, I've had customers' cars get towed and receive tickets, which breaks my heart since the topey is so high and negative moments like that impact our business. The town's businesses are mostly family run and they all close earlier than most places, so they can also take care of their families. So one, the ones who need the help are the most are excluded with a five P M timeframe. Um, I think there was misunderstanding or communication from someone other than a board member that had her thinking we were gonna sh- uh, shut the meters off at five P M. Um, and a lot of us businesses have close relationships with the entire town committee, uh, having once known another for many years, so I'm disheartened but still hopeful. I have faith in our elected officials to do right and protect the family and businesses that they swore to. Out of any one, it's us small business owners who are suffering the most with how COVID changed everything. The inflation on products rendering our profits to barely nothing, taxes, credit card fees and percentages they take out for every transaction, fees to state, town, federal and commissions, how are we supposed to feed our families? We need the town's help and not just to have the town add another hardship to the already daunting job of being a small business owner in the town of Upper Marlboro. Parking has always been a large problem with COVID, but now we need anything we can get to help keep our heads above the continually rising waters. Thank you so much, everyone. The Marlboro Grill family. We will allow the other, um, folks who have their hands up to speak.
Hello, this is Lamar Henson. And I'm a new business in the town. However, I'm not uh, new at business. And and just like Marlboro Grill said, because I'm gonna be going into their space, um, parking will become an issue. And so at five o'clock with the county and and their parking, it would just be very less confusing for the customers who are coming into the restaurants who will be open up until our business nine o'clock. Um, Domino's nine, later, Lido's with their own parking as well as street parking as well. We we wanna be able to thrive in the community that is in the midst of change, right? We we were seeing with the great things that are happening in the town, but yet the parking can become an encumbrance to the businesses that are there. We're not saying change what you guys are doing for the court sessions, but when it's normal every day in the evening, business for the citizens of the town and those who live outside of the town to be able to not look at the businesses in the town as an inconvenience because of the parking. Um, we want the businesses to thrive. All businesses want to thrive, just like G mentioned in her her statement that you read, Sarah. Makes absolute sense. And I just hope that, you know, the commissioners, that you guys really consider um, the businesses, because when the businesses thrive, the town will thrive. And if the town is thriving, the people that live in the community will also thrive as well. I'm a big community guy. I lived in Upper Marl, grew up there. As you know, you guys already know my mom, right? And so I I love the town. That's why I'm also in La Plata. I have a shop here in La Plata. I love small towns. I love the state of Maryland. I just wanna see us thrive and and be great like we are. So I just hope that you guys take into consideration, um, the parking. I know you guys have the 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 dollar for the hour thing going, um. It would probably be better for us if, um, if we could, you know, lower that amount in the evening and as well as on Saturdays, turn off like it is with the county so that we can avoid confusion. I I I complete my my little comment. Hope you guys take it into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I hate to do this in the middle of public comment, but I think there's confusion as to what we had decided last time. I don't know if I should clear that up now or after we take comments. Maybe after.
You should do it now, so maybe that, maybe the next comment.
So the the board at the work session, um, decided they wanted to shut the meters off at, was it seven o'clock, Kyle? Yeah, I need you to remember. Um, and it's probably written here and I won't find it as fast as you will. Seven o'clock.
Um, you mean what was, uh, decided? Um, I thought it was ten o'clock. Oh, well, like
Maybe it was ten o'clock.
Yes. Yeah, this was discussed at the October work session.
Ten o'clock. And I think the parking rate stayed the same all the way up till ten o'clock.
Correct. That's, uh, as it stands now. Um, obviously, whatever the board would like to be reflected in that one resolution, we're gonna be drafting, but yeah.
Right. So I think the comments are still relevant. I don't think we, but I just wanna make sure everyone understands. And I think there is some confusion because, um, people other than the Board of Commissioners and the Town Administrator are giving out information about the parking ordinance to others. And so I think if you are a business, um, it will be best if you come to the town to ask what it is. It's to make sure that everything is understood. So I'm just gonna say that and we'll go back to public comment.
Oh, am I still? Okay. Okay, so with the confusion, um, I read the filings uh, about, uh, that I don't have that, I don't have the uh legislation in front of me right now. I'm like, Sarah, I don't know what I did with it. So much, but my my thought is, or what I believe I read about the uh, about the fees, the parking fees. Uh, and I could be wrong, but I thought that after five, the fees go down to one dollar per hour. Am I wrong in that?
That may be in some old, uh, so that the package is gonna get updated, um, for the discussion in uh, the November work session. Um, we just kind of put what was there currently in the packet tonight. Um, but it's all in draft form, but I think it's all gonna pretty much kind of get changed based off of the discussions at the uh October work session.
Oh, so the confusion is the packet. I apologize then.
Thank you. I I I accept that apology. So with that said, so with that said, um, if I recall correctly, um, the parking fees actually are not, if if that's gonna, you know, carry on to to the next, um, session, the parking fees will not change. They will continue to be two dollars and fifty cents per hour, even after five o'clock.
And some so from seven A M until ten P M. This was during our work session. This isn't, we're not voting tonight, though, so.
Right, yes, this, we're still in discussion.
I mean, we discussed and this is what we're moving forward with, but we are taking public comment. So you would say, so so seven A M until ten P M and then, um, it will be free after that. And I think it was Monday through Saturday.
Okay, so um, with that, as a resident of the town and also as a a mother of a business owner, partner with my son in the business, uh, I'm saying, what do the commissioners feel that they can do for the businesses as you read Marlboro Grill's, uh, statement? It can be very hard, uh, to run a business, especially with the parking fees being so high. And most of the businesses, especially Lido's, uh, Domino's, Marlboro Grill and Landis Hices and Creams, these people are gonna be coming in and they're going to pick up really quickly and then move on. I know that you mentioned the fact that you're working with uh, spaces that there can be free parking. Uh, I don't know whether that's in the uh, legislation either, but I would like to know, is that gonna be a consideration or when you finish this draft legislation, what will be in it in relation to helping the businesses out? Also, the business fee, what are the businesses getting for paying their business fee? Is it just taxes? They're just paying that business fee and then that's it for them? Is that a low, is that too much?
Because well, we're we're wrapping up your three minutes, so we Those are Okay, okay. Because those are questions you're asking us to think about more than respond to.
Exactly, exactly.
Alright. Okay, so, um, we're gonna move on. Um, and Lamar, I'm sorry, I I, you're, this is your first time, um, but we allow one comment per item. I'm sorry. Um, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, Joe Clay, Old Marlboro Pike, um, just wanted the commissioners to be aware the the history of this. Um, about ten years ago, there was actually, uh, which said that we should strive to set the parking We should strive to set the parking rates such that there were a few open spots, so that way people in need could, could actually park and not have to. Keep circling around. And that, at that point, I think we, we went to two dollars an hour, but it was just during the day. About five years ago, when Jim Story was president. They added evening and Saturday. Requirement to pay for parking. And there were a lot of business owners were very upset with that because it was introduced. At the next meeting, they read it, they took commissioner comment and voted on it without even letting any of the. Business people speak. And, you know, basically it does have a major impact because as soon as someone gets a parking ticket. You know, for. You know, significant amount of money, they're probably never going to come back to that business again, so.
Alright, thank you. And Kyle did give us an overview at our work session. Alright, we have Patty Calcutta.
So is there, right now, the town parking lot? It's not being used at night, but would that aid? In allowing additional unpaid parking, since it's closed after six and it is open? So that if someone does want to park, I know they can park at the court as well. But right now, the sign says it's closed after six. So I don't know if that could be an aid to anyone who did want to visit the town outside of. You can't park on the street, but we will allow parking at least in the evenings and weekends at the town parking lot.
That is something that we have already discussed. And we've discussed some different parking options that can be free. And we will discuss those again at our work session. On, Kyle, can you give me the date? I moved from my desk, so I don't have everything. It's the 11th, isn't it? No, it's not.
It'll be November eighth.
Well, we don't have an election, so, oh, I see what you're saying. We'll have to think about that. But not right now. There's no more public comment on this topic.
I'd like to say something, because somebody made a comment about something. I just want to clarify. Once we get this ordinance passed so that everybody understands and knows that there will be. Signs that will be replacing the current signs that will clearly tell the times. Of the parking meters, whenever that's decided upon. And whatever the rates are, the rates will not be on the meat, on the signs, but the signs will clearly indicate the times of parking. The other thing is, the town of Upper Marlboro does not tow. If anybody's cars are being towed, it's because they're parked on private property. And there are some conditions that these entities have established that we're not, just so everybody's clear, the town is not towing. Anybody's cars. So I just wanted that to be clear. We're ticketing them, but we're not towing them. So I just wanted everybody to understand that it's not us towing anybody's car. It's somebody parking in a private lot. That that private lot owner has established a agreement with a tow company that's towing their cars, and it is expensive, but it is not the town of Upper Marlboro.
Thank you. So there's no.
One other thing, one other thing, just to clarify, you can put change in the meter, so it's not a whole two dollars and fifty cents. You could. Actually change in the meter. So that it could be thirty minutes, twenty minutes, but money in the meter and they will get time. So it's not a full two fifty unless you're trying to stay more than the hour. So you can actually put money in there for those individuals who come and go. They could put money in there, just like every other meter, so that it gives them ten or fifteen minutes or whatever they think they need. So I wanted to be clear also that it's not two fifty. All the time. It's, you can put money in there up to two fifty, so that there are opportunities for people to come. Put fifty cents in there, get whatever the time is, and then they can leave. So you don't have to pay the whole two fifty for ten minutes. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. Because that's a misconception that we're only charging two fifty. The meters take coins all the way up, so. You could put a dime in there and get minutes.
Any other discussion? Okay. We don't need to do anything because it was introducing and you already read it and. I apologize, everyone. It has been long week after long week after long week this month, so. We are going to move on to item F, emergency resident assistance. This is the board discussion. I kind of, I put this out to y'all in the update last week. And so we have this emergency assistance program. When we initially had it, there was kind of, everyone wanted to be on. The board to decide. We didn't have anyone come in with any applications. And so we've been kind of talking about what to do about it. In the meantime, we have received an application. And staff has taken a look at it and said that it is going, it, it meets the requirements. So what I'm kind of requesting, what I'm requesting tonight is. If it is possible to form an ad hoc board to approve the one application, and then at the work session, we can discuss a. Longer term board. The ad hoc board, in order to just make it very simple, would include one member from each. Department, a town hall, so that would be three staff members. The resident, Evelyn Stevens is willing to do that, and then a pastor from one of the churches. And I believe Pastor Satan may do it, but I haven't gotten final confirmation from him. If you guys are all amenable to this board convening tomorrow or Thursday to discuss this application because. The resident will incur late fees if the bill is not paid. By the end of the month. So that's why I'm making the request.
You're saying it's the only person that requested assistance?
Yes.
Then you have my vote, of course.
Pay the bill, likewise.
Okay, we'll form the ad hoc committee tomorrow and let them take care of that, and then that is going to be. On our. Discussion for our work session on the eighth. Thank you, guys. That gets us to administrative updates. Do we have any, Kyle?
A couple of quick ones. We have. A lot of public art going in downtown. We have the mural. Taking shape at the construction site. Those are happening. We're going to be doing a press conference with some of the artists for both that. And the three painted horses that Public Works just picked up from. A body shop, it got clear coated, so we're going to be installing those tomorrow with the Arts May Council. So there's going to be three awesome looking horses downtown. I think everyone will really like them. From Thursday, and then we just have a lot of events coming up. That's two weeks. Food Shark Festival on Friday, along with the blood drive happening during the day, in addition to the Washington International Horse Show. And then on Saturday, we have the Farmer's Market, people talking about Marlboro Volunteer Fire Department's having their open house. And then it's also Kids Day for the Washington International Horse Show. That's free. And so those are happening on Saturday, so just remember. We got a lot going on the past two weeks, so that's the big thing that we're kind of focusing.
You guys should check out the horse show. It's very cool. Does anyone else have anything to add before we can move on to public comment? Alright, we will move on to public comment. Kyle, you can just, if you can let them know who they are as you let them in.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just want to correct the statement that was made after I was allowed to speak, so this is sort of a new topic. Chairperson Patty Calacut and I do not have a recollection or record of a three-person committee request. The mayor's statement at eight oh one PM tonight seemed to infer. Said that Patty acknowledged such a request, which is not true, and Patty is saying across from me, I had to put that into the record. However, a quest is not sufficient to overrule an ordinance or bylaws. At the time when the mayor representative allegedly made the request, they should have submitted the proper ordinance to make that change. That's how legislation works. It does not work by requesting verbally or email or written to a committee to change the number of members of the board. And should not have resulted in an emergency ordinance, and what really constitutes the emergency to the town about a three-person versus seven-person committee? I would be grateful if the members of the Board of Commissioners would reflect for a minute. On how they would feel if put into the surprise position that TMHC board members found themselves in this weekend. After spending upwards of a decade dedicated to supporting the historical committee's mission. Was the intention of posting this major ordinance change on Friday after five forty-three PM? With no email notification, the TMHC members, the right way to approach or prepare for a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next comment.
Joe or Clay, Old Marlboro Pike. I want to remind everyone that early voting starts on Thursday and runs until the next Thursday, so you can do that. Or get an absentee ballot if you don't want to vote in person on November eighth. I also forgot to mention in previous comment. Are a problem. And that is why the Board of Commissioners was expanded to five. So it seems strange. To. Put that restriction and make it difficult for us to communicate. And, and potentially violate the Open Meetings Act when we specifically went the other way with the Board of Commissioners. Also, I don't know if it's, if it's in any way possible. I know it's a lot more electronic now, if there's any. You know, in and out, then maybe we should just cut the parking entire, you know, payment for parking and anything, so thank you.
Thank you, and I think we have two more comments.
And then there'll be Monica Williams. Patty, you're good to go.
Yes, I, I just am going to reassert what both Brian and Joe said. If the commission had requested that we go from seven members to three members. I'm pretty sure we would have requested a discussion with the commission. As to why that was required after we have been able. To maintain a commission of seven members over ten years. I certainly would not have just went, meh, I don't care. So I do have respect for this committee, for this commission, for this town. And. I believe that if there are changes to be made, and I'm not against change. That the discussion be initiated by the town. To do so. And as a citizen, I'm also requesting. That the town send me the public record where it was requested. That we limit the commission down to that number and not ask the, the committee. Or the committee members to go through. Every meeting minute to figure that out. As none of the five committee members who are here on this board that were on the board recall that conversation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to Monica Williams, I would just like to. Say, I have been working very hard this evening not to embarrass individual members of the historic committee. And I understand that you are all upset, but Patty, there is video record of you agreeing. To the three members were having a discussion about it. So some of this falls on you all. You know, we're the Board of Commissioners. We communicate with you. And we were not aware. That it is an ordinance for you, and it is unreasonable actually to expect any new Board of Commissioner. Or even any Board of Commissioner to get a handle on every single. Ordinance this town has. That is why we have a agency who is doing that for us, so we can figure that out. That's why it's so hard right now. But the. Can, or store committee did know that they were authorized by ordinance, and they could have had, that could have been brought up when we had that conversation. At a public meeting. So I'm sorry that y'all don't remember that. But I will send you the video record of it, and I'm not trying to embarrass anyone. Thank you. Let's let Monica go ahead.
How's it going, Monica?
You might need to unmute yourself.
Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. Monica Williams from the Marlboro Town HOA, just passing along some accolades from some of the. Community members. They're very pleased with a lot of the activities that have been going on the last two weeks and the upcoming. Items that are on the calendar. They think that it's been very well handled and managed, and this is, you know, pretty much what we like to see. In our town, basically opportunities for the community to come together. We don't have to leave for the town. For, you know, to have some kind of family enjoyment, and we're just really pleased with. A lot of the activities and everything that's been going on the last few, uh, two weeks and. What we have on the, uh, coming up in the, uh, I guess up until Christmas. But I just wanted to pass that along.
Yeah, there's cool Christmas event coming, guys. Alright. That looks like the end of the public comment, so we are going to just do preliminary approval of the. Agenda for next time, and hopefully nothing is going to throw itself in the way this time. First of all, Better City is going to be attending our work sessions once a month to kind of report in with us. And talk to us about direction for economic development, so we will let them go first. We will have the financial packages on the agenda, but probably won't have much discussion because they're sort of on autopilot now. We will bring back the discussion on accountability and government structure and hopefully have a draft from Kevin. On that, hopefully he will be back from vacation in time to do that. We will also have a discussion about the Ethics Committee, the Code of Conduct. I would like to discuss a little bit as a group about the OMS part of the Vision Plan, because I think we're going to have to have some discussions with the county about that. Coming up, and I do not want to be making that decision by myself. So that will be there, and then parking ordinance. Resident Assistance Board, and if we want to expand it, we can discuss that. As well as our, our Director of Public Works, and this has to be kind of, everyone. Pay attention, because our Director of Public Works had money aside to repair a salt spreader. And then put it onto his, an additional truck. At the time, like we, we originally were like, don't repair it, we're gonna get a new one, and then the, it looked like maybe repairing it was gonna allow him to have two. But again, it's just not going to work to repair it. So he is going to be asking us to reallocate some of his funding. So that he can get his trucks outfitted in time for winter. And so he's going to be asking us to approve, potentially approve a financial expenditure over two thousand dollars. At a work session, and he's asking that because if we don't approve it on November eighth and we wait till November. I think it's the twenty second, then maybe we have a snowstorm and he doesn't have everything he needs to do the job. So I want the public to know that we may vote on that at a work session, and I just want commissioners to have a heads up on that. Unless there are major objections. Does that work for everyone? Do we have additions, changes?
The, it overall works for me. Wanted to make one comment. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight. Excuse me, of, of a couple of things. I think there were, there, there have been some items over the last couple of months that we, you know, kind of started a discussion on, then it got. Kind of tabled, and I, I, we haven't necessarily gotten around that to, so at least want to just. Bring it back and refresh, you know, refresh our memories on it, so, and it doesn't necessarily have to go on to the work session, but again, just bringing it back top of mind. One of them being. The SCWG slash economic firm. Uh, one of them being uh the S C W G slash uh Economic Firm Legislation. Uh, the second being department space, you know, we had the conversation with Chief last time and how that, you know, his a conversation around space for the Police Department and how that also kind of impacts space for Department of Public Works. Uh, and then, Mary, you mentioned the Vision Plan specifically around, around OMS, but I think uh I saw it on the rolling agenda. We may be a little bit past what we were originally planning to talk about, so just want to make sure those items were, were keeping top, top of mind to, to get around to as well.
That's a good point.
Um, while you were talking, I realized I didn't put the um the closed session to discuss Historic Committee. And the um, like, just basic, sorry, the, in the open session, it would be the committee to twenty twenty nineteen dash oh two committee ordinance. And that's real, that will tie in with the Code of Conduct a little bit. Um, so I don't think it's really adding anything major additional.
Okay, so are we talking about adding on these additional three? Or just keeping them top of mind, I understand, but I think um uh this looks like it might go into December.
Um. Go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna say, if that, if that's the case, that's why, you know, Mayor, I've requested just kind of an updated rolling schedule, I just wanted to make sure again that those things are being accounted for, and if there are discussion points that we need, or you know stakeholder groups that we want to have conversations with prior to discussing them as a board that, you know, we're, we're kind of doing that piece, so that again, they're not just kind of languishing out there without, without a end date of when the conversation gets had, we move on it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, understood, I got that.
We will type this up and get it sent out, it will come from Kyle or I tomorrow, just because John is out on leave. And then we'll discuss again how to incorporate that, maybe incorporate those things back in in December, and kind of my thought for just saying, we're going to talk about Vision Plan with um OMS is because it sounded like the whole Vision Plan was a lot for people to digest, and we are getting ready to have conversations with the different levels of government and elected officials about budgeting, and we need to have this conversation about OMS, um, and I think I think today, we've all seen what happens when I, you know, don't have the input that I need to make a collective decision. And so I really want us to be making these decisions collectively. So if we can bring it up in the little pieces, then that gives the information that we need so that um when I'm representing all of us in a meeting, that's like during the day that everyone can't come to, that I'm really representing all five of us instead of just what's in my own head, um, because that's really important to me, so.
So are we gonna address helping the residents, um, I'm trying, the business owner, uh, parking? I, the parking issues like um downtown, do you think that's resolved, or do you think that's something that to be discussed?
That's on the list of things.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not like, I've listened to the red, uh, the business owner comment, I just want to make sure we're still listening, that's all.
Yes, we will discuss the parking ordinance, so it's, it's a lot, and I'm going to send it out to y'all. Um, and, and really getting this financial package passed is sort of critical to like reducing the excess in these meetings. Um, because inflation and our charter not keeping up with that, so.
Sorry, one one more item, and then a question, uh, is, would it be possible to get an update on, on Mina code at the, at the work session? On where we are with that whole codification and written and timeline on that? Is the question, and then, or um, just a quick add, and then one question, we moved the December work session to the sixth, right, the first Tuesday, instead of the second Tuesday, just due to the holiday schedule, am I remembering that correctly?
Correct, it's the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday for December.
Okay.
The meetings, and for Mina code, it's a uh ten to twelve month process, we probably won't see anything kind of solidified up until uh March, April, May, um, the next step is having a meeting with the attorney. Um, both attorneys right now, all our legislation's being reviewed, it's going to be under review prior through uh the end of the year, um, and then we'll be scheduling a meeting with uh our attorney, their attorneys, look over everything and bring some stuff before the board, so I can give that update real quick.
See, already knocked it out, we're, we're already.
Okay. Alright, and if our equipment works, um, we'll be attempting a blended situation. And since the work session, we'll, we'll see how we deal with that.
We'll figure out who can make it. Like half, half and half?
It may just, we may just test it with like myself and staff. To just kind of make it easy to see if it works, so that we can implement it for the November meeting and have more, more uh, more commissioners down here for that meeting.
Got you, thank you, man.
I don't know that we need to move the work session because of the election, but I'm, do or any commissioner is gonna, you know, not be able to vote until till that, you know, November eighth, and like, we'll keep you from voting by having our work session on that day.
I don't go vote till six fifty-nine, I'm, I'm just kidding, no, it's.
I go before work.
Can you mute Colbert there? Alright, sounds like everyone's okay, um, hopefully we don't have residents who are kept out of it from that. Alright, I think we're ready to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Kyle, will you call a vote?
Uh, Mayor Sarah Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Tom Sanchez.
Aye.
And Commissioner Karen Lot.
Aye.
You guys have it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good done, everyone, thank you.
Good night's sleep is what I need, good night, guys.